Well, the time is 5:05 PM and we are convening as the Provo City School Board of Education. We are meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah, and we'll begin with a roll call. I'm Jennifer Carntridge, Board President.
Gina Hills, Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Meg Gattawagnan, Board Member.
Rachel Ru, Student Board Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Jeremy Cade, Board Member.
Devon Daly, Business Administrator.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Thank you, and we want to welcome everybody else who's here with us today and thank everybody who helped make this meeting run smoothly. So, do we have a motion to start our study session?
I approve we begin our study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Van Wagenen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Hills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in study session, and we are going to start with our Board Member training, and then turn it over to Meg for that.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything to project, I apologize. Take a listen to me closely.
No music?
No dance? Maybe a tap dance, I thought maybe we could do that. Okay, so quickly, I'm just gonna review for all of us, those watching, kind of, the different relationships, board's relationship with other board members, board relationships with the public, and board relationships with the media. So to start, like, kind of, in our handbook it discusses, you know, kind of, gives some guidance on how, as board members, we interact with one another and kind of what that can look like and ideally looks like. What I hold and appreciate about this is the reminder that, as a board, we, you know, we are seven of us, seven individual members, but that we do work and try to make decisions with a sense of unity and common purpose. When I think about this, I don't think, I think it can be easy for the public to say, "Well, that just means you just always agree," or that there's no kind of real robust discussion about things. But no, I think it does mean that we are common in the purpose of what is gonna be best for students, what is best for academic achievement, for wellness, for our students, and for our employees of the school district, which can have varying opinions, but that kind of keeps us unified and hopefully doing the best that we can. And I really value working with all of you, and that is something that I have really enjoyed most of the year on the school board, is I do think we do a decent job at that, and that has been rewarding and hopeful. So, and then also a reminder about our open meeting laws. So when we email, you know, email can be good for communication of like information, like, "Here's this," or "We need to be here on this day," or whatnot, but discussions do not happen over email, because we know that when we, in order to have discussions, it needs to be in open, in public, following our open meeting laws, and there should be more than three or four members present. So remember the reminder of that. Moving on to our relationship with the public, we all know, yeah, this is always, I think, on the bottom of our minds a lot, and as we talk with different people in our own communities and across the city, one thing, as general policy, the board discourages anonymous communication, and then a reminder that as the public communicates with us, and we communicate with the public, and I think even within the district, to just do so with civility, and I really like the reminder of a problem-solving approach. I know for myself, sometimes I can complain about something or this, but I like the idea of remembering, like, okay, how do we solve a problem, right, and how do we bring our best selves to that approach? And then our quick email policy, as a board, like, if we get an email that comes from a constituent or a community member, the first person to respond, if we can identify what area that constituent lives in from the email, then the board member who represents that area is the first person to, this is what our handbook says, the first person to respond, after that person's respond, anyone else is welcome to respond if they have something else to add or want to speak to, whatever the concern or the email's about. There is pauses to read, there are times where maybe it's best, though, if we direct the email to Wendy or other district leadership, they may be able to answer the email or address the concern more properly than the board members can. And that's something where I think as a board, we do direct that, like, you know, "Thank you for this, your email, I'm gonna put you in touch with the best person to help you with this." So, any questions about this? Am I going too fast?
Doing great.
Okay, last thing, the board relations with the media, and I think this is something that has been kind of reminded, we have been reminded about, is that to direct the media to our wonderful communications team, Caleb, Sean, and their team, and to have kind of a designated person to respond to the media requests and when they need information. But it does kind of go, I got this from the USBA guidebook, there's like a whole list of different ways to kind of establish that relationship, that it is, you know, establish relationships, be accessible and responsive, be transparent and open, and offer opportunities for engagement. It also talks about using social media and online platforms to have information that can be accessed and can be widely shared. So those are kind of some of the main things that kind of stood out to me, but I think most importantly, I know I like to remember this, is to funnel requests through our community department, who is our appointed liaison. Okay, you got it.
Thank you, Meg. Okay, before we move on to our next agenda item, I just wanted to give a bigger welcome to Rachel, our student board member representing Timview, and our Provo High, we've got a board member, a student board member as well, she just could not be here tonight, correct? Yeah. So, and the great thing about our student board members is you get to weigh in, as we discuss, in our study session especially, is when we do a lot of our discussion and give ideas and input, so feel free to jump in with the rest of us, and we would love to hear your ideas, and I might call on you sometime just to hear what you think.
Hey, sounds good.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, we will now go to item number five, our early learning plan, and we will turn that over to Michelle Eldridge, our Director of Continuous School Movement.
Okay, I'm excited to get to present to you this evening on something directly tied to our strategic plan, and that is academic achievement of students, so I'm very excited to be here to talk to you about that today. And one little piece of that is our Utah Early Learning Plan. So I'm just gonna review with you that legislation, which changed again last spring, it changes every spring a little bit, so I'm gonna review that a little bit with you, and then share with you a little bit of how we ended last year and what we're looking forward to this year. So, just as a review, this early learning plan comes through Senate Bill 127, and it began as an early literacy plan, then it changed to an early learning plan when they added math components to it, and the biggest change this last spring was that there are now, last year we were allowed to have a literacy goal as an option, they took that away last spring, the legislatures did, and are now not allowing a literacy goal in the plan, only math goals. However, Senate Bill 127 all includes all the literacy learning outcomes, so there...
If you can't answer the question, just say "I can't answer," but why? Can we have a literacy goal?
State legislatures determined that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We still have literacy goals as a district. They're just not part of the Utah... Okay, I forgot it. The not required part of the Utah Early Learning Plan.
But this started out as a literacy?
Yes. So, historically, yes, and Senate Bill 127 still includes all the literacy outcomes. So, there's lots of pieces to 127, and much of it, well, you can see on the right, none of those pieces went away. So on the right-hand side, the key components of this were letters, training for all K-3 teachers, that was completed last year, so that is no longer happening or funded through the state. Letters for Admin was done two years ago, and we completed that. It requires Acadience be the measurement tool for reading and math. It requires diagnostic assessment in both literacy and math. Still requires diagnostic assessment for literacy. We just don't have a goal for literacy. And we have lots of ways to do that with elementary school. Progress Monitor is...
Lisa has a question.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Lisa! Oh, hi, Lisa!
Hi, friend, hi. My question is, did we lose funding here that we were using in that letters training?
Yeah.
Like, or is that funding now allocated, or supposed to, is it still there but now earmarked towards this math goals, or did we lose some funding as a result of this bill?
No. The funding that we had that helped pay for letters and for some instructional coaching was called a professional learning grant. It was separate from 127, but it was written because of 127, and because letters is finished, that grant no longer exists. So we do not have that funding anymore.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
But we still use letters.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the training. Yeah, letters isn't a program curriculum, it's a professional development, it's the science of reading professional development.
What do we do with new teachers that come in?
Judy and I are working on a proposal for that.
Okay.
Yes. So we have an issue, and I was gonna bring that up, but one of our problems is now going forward, and he, so the state, when they rewrote this, they wrote this five-ish years ago, the intent was to have time for districts to train teachers in the science of reading while they worked with universities on the WASAT front, to make sure that students were coming out of the universities with science of reading training. And they estimated that would take, I wanna say five years, but it could actually be more like seven. So I, so I was helping the state on the committee for that, working with the universities at the time, and all the universities had to change a lot of their practicum experiences and their education, a couple more so than others, and then the guarantee was that in order to get a Utah license in elementary, you had to pass a science of reading practicum assessment, and that was officially in place last year. So now, anyone graduating from any university in Utah has to pass this test in order to have their teaching license. So that was happening while we educated teachers who hadn't gone through that training for the past four or five years. So in theory, the new people coming out have this background knowledge, and I will say they do, or they are coming in with background knowledge on this now, but we do have issues with like upper grade teachers who didn't get any of this training, moving to a lower grade classes. We have people from outside of Utah, coming from other states who don't have the background, so we definitely have, not a huge number, when Judy and I looked last year, kind of predicting ahead, maybe 20 district-wide, that we would want to do something for, not as intensive letters, there's a lot of other programs out there we could do relatively, reasonably cost-wise, and give people time to have that training over time. We actually have a couple people internally who are letters-certified trainers, so we could do some of our own training internally, too. But definitely a need we have.
Okay.
Definitely. Many districts in the state already have done this for a long time, planned this already because when they started K-3, they were like, "We wanna do 4-6 at the same time." So they kind of started this 4-6 training in several districts around the state, so when this happened, they were kind of bringing those people along at the same time, so Judy and I, and our teams are working on a proposal for that. Okay, so interventions are also required for both reading and math. We're required to communicate with parents three times a year. We got some really great feedback, I guess it was almost over a year ago, on that communication, and hope, hope that that got better this last year with not just what Acadience is measuring, but also how parents can help their students in the schools, so if you hear any more feedback on that, that would be great. And then the last thing, this is the last part of the bill that will start this year, is principals and district leadership are required to what's go through, go through what's called change management, which is sort of like a needs assessment and goal-setting around literacy, and they have an outside consultant that helps your team walk through those things. We're, we're kind of lucky that we're kind of ahead of that, we already do that with our elementary principals, so they are required to go through the training, but I've been working with the state and with the consulting company on how we do this together as a district with all of our principals, and align it to our strategic plan and our school plans, and they're all on board with that. So they'll be starting that training in February. So all of that is mostly literacy, but the plan is math. Okay? Okay. All right. Okay, so, before, these are this year's goals, so Bonnie, can you skip ahead one slide just to reference? So these should link in your slides for you, I'm gonna, well, yeah, Bonnie, will you link that first one, the three-year data review? Hopefully that opens up just fine. So, when we write, when we work on the plan, we have to do three-year trend data analysis every year, and by "we," I mean there's a big committee of us that works on this. And I'm not gonna, this is available to you, so I can answer your questions generally, but if you want more detail, I'm happy to sit down one-on-one with you. But essentially, we look at three-year trends of what has happened with data in the district. This year, again, we only did this officially with math, but wink, wink, we have it on reading, too, just for the record. But this is math, 'cause it's the math one, okay? So we look at the three-year trends in every single area on Acadience, reading or math, this is math. This first section is basically your kids who started on grade level, did you increase that at the end of the grade level? And we look across K-3, and then the measures underneath of it are all each little sub-measure of math Acadience. So the math Acadience test is broken into several sub-measures, so we do the same thing on every piece of the math assessment. And then our team analyzes that, kind of breaks it apart, and has a deep discussion on what's best for, what would we suggest as our goals. One thing just to note is that we look at the three-year trend, the state, we write our goals to the state, they give us feedback on that. We really felt like taking off the first year of math changed, that's why you see a two-year and a three-year average here, because of what our teachers now know about Acadience math, which is way more than they knew two years ago. We didn't feel like it was fair to add these really low percentages of growth into that three-year average, 'cause it's super skewed how low things really seemed to be, but really weren't, because if you look at the two-year, it's pretty, it's different. So, Bonnie, if you'll, any questions on the data? Okay, so...
We absorbed it all in, not 30 seconds.
Yeah, I mean, yay, no questions.
I got it.
Okay, so will you go back to the slide before this, Bonnie? Please, and thank you. Okay, so after analyzing that data, here are proposed goals. New part of legislation is the board does not have to approve our early learning plan, but we have to inform you of the goals. So, prior to this year, you've always voted on this, but you will not need to do that this year. So three goals, one is a growth goal, and the state determines this goal, everyone in all of Utah K-3 have to meet this goal, and this is that 60% of the students in first through third grade will make typical or better growth as measured by the Acadience. So it's basically saying, kids are gonna make growth, 60% of them will meet this typical or better growth target. What we're working on with the schools is helping them realize that that's a great goal, and if they're not tracking their low kids, typical growth is not enough to close their learning gaps. So same with reading, so we really help them look student by student on what that means if they don't hit the typical growth, actually above typical for well below kids. And then the opposite of our high kids can all still make at least typical or better growth, so all kids should be making, the dream is that we say this is 100, but this is the state's goal, so we're going with that, okay? So that's the first goal. Last year, we did meet this goal, so yay, that was a very big deal. We, in fact, it was a huge growth from years prior. We actually unofficially, the state gives us your official data, but unofficially, 65% of our students made typical or better growths last year. We celebrated every teacher and grade level team last spring who met their growth goals, so we individually celebrated with every teacher the last week of school and with grade level teams on those who met last year's goals, so we're excited to do that again this year. The other two math goals are both similar to last year, but pushing us a little bit. So first grade and second grade, it's the same goal, both increasing one by seven, or, excuse me, both by 7%, which this is what this means. Whoever starts in front of you at the beginning of the year that is at or above benchmark, whatever that number is, we wanna increase that number by 7%. So last year, we had a maintenance goal, if you remember, we were allowed to have a maintain the number, and we actually increased it, which is very exciting and good, and so based off that trend data that I showed you just a minute ago, we felt like these were very ambitious and attainable goals for our schools. So first, like, just, these are just notes, last year, first grade hit seven, increased by seven, and second increased by 10%. We do have this data individually on every school, and we'll be working with instructional coaches and principals on identifying students, and by teacher, for most teachers, this is like five or six kids at the most that they have to move, so we really work on, these are, right, big district goals, but it only matters if the individual teacher is moving their two to five kids over. So our next work is with schools on identifying who those kids are that they can work with to meet those goals, so. So that is our plan. The next slide, Bonnie, if you'll...
Lisa has a question.
Oh, sorry, Lisa, I can't see you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just wonder, I know individual schools have their school improvement plans, and they have goals, right, in this area, so are these meant to kind of line up with each other, or do they have kind of their school improvement math goals, and then this? I'm just, I just wanted to understand how those work out. If I'm a teacher, which one am I supposed to be, whichever is higher, like, how do I, how do I focus?
So we do two things to help with that. These, the school plans and this plan don't land at the same time with the same data points. So last spring, when we met with every school to set their school goals, we use this as a guidepost of like, "Don't forget this piece in your school plan," so that all 13 elementary schools have a broad goal that they will then individualize more once they have this data in their hands. So they're very aligned, in some cases, like, these numbers are almost exactly, but, but they're, they're really aligned in their school plans, and then also, almost all the school plans also still have a reading goal as part of this, so...
Got it, yeah. And are they measuring with, like, is this measured with Acadience, whereas maybe those goals are...
Nope. They're Acadience as well.
Not, like...
Yeah. They also all have Acadience goals, yep, yep. And if they don't, Jared and I will work with them on that, but they all do. Yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
I think what's interesting is some of the schools have aligned their school improvement plan goals with end-of-level testing, because that's what our strategic plan does, but they use Acadience as part of the action items for how to reach that particular goal. So this learning plan actually facilitates quite nicely in terms of that, of those action plans of how they can reach that...
That's helpful, thanks.
So if you looked at a plan, you might, you wouldn't see it at the top on most schools, you'll see it at the bottom, in their language arts and math sections.
Got it.
Any other questions? Okay, I included a link to our, what we submitted to the state for our plan, it's everything that I just told you, and how we'll be doing professional development. We have to report what curriculum resources we use, they have to be evidence-based, scientifically evidence-based, so that what we submitted to the state is just a link for you to see all of that. Our plan has been approved by the state, and I think that's it.
I think that's it?
I have a question.
Yes.
So everything looks really great. I just still have a question similar to what Gina asked at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Like, why they got rid of the literacy goal? Is this something, as a school board, we would, you would like us to go toward getting that reinstated?
That would be so amazing.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, that's like with the legislative, our working with our state legislators.
It'd be really great.
Having both the math goal and a literacy goal would be something good.
It'd be something great. Okay.
It would give us statewide...
The State Board of Education, USBE, did not recommend that change to the legislatures over there.
I mean, my understanding is that they said, "Okay, we got you started to focus on literacy, so now you also need to focus on math, but we'll only track the math, so we're not being, giving you as much oversight that you don't like sometimes, like the reporting?"
We all have, we still do all that reporting. In fact, now, the state used to give us the data, now we have to give it to the state.
Okay.
So actually increased our work...
Just for the literacy, because they'll do the math, 'cause that's the goal?
Right.
So if it was part of the goal?
Right.
Okay, Legislative Committee.
Yeah, got it.
It sounds like you told the State Board about that.
Legislatures did this. This came through legislation.
State Board recommended that you keep literacy and math and the legislature.
USBE staff recommended that we keep it as is.
Got it.
Actually, they wanted to go back to what this was, which was two literacy, one math.
Okay. And I don't, I don't know how accurate this is, but my understanding was that it was kind of this idea, they started focusing on post-secondary numbers, that it was eighth grade math that was driving this, so their concern was kids were not up to par in math in elementary school, and so it was increasing dropout rates and access to post-secondary, so they created this shift that went through some of these studies that happened, and that's, they feel like math is a bigger number in terms of projecting your post-secondary success more so than literacy, and that's why this shift occurred, that was, I don't agree with that, but that was...
Yeah. I know that there, there was some frustration with educators across the state with how intense the letters professional development was, and I think perhaps some of that was in response to that intensive literacy training. There is no intensive math training required in any of this, so. So just next steps, I just put this slide in here so you know what kind of what's next. So we've already done step one and two, and just letting schools know what the data is in their school. We had professional development last week with all of our teachers.
I see it's instructional coach and T1 coordinator, is Title 1 coordinator.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
K-3 received PD with student data, fourth through sixth grade actually received some science of reading professional development that we created over the summer. Our next step is working with schools individually on identifying who these kids are and setting some goals, and then ongoing training between teaching and learning in my department to help the school, so that's where we're headed next. Any other questions?
Congratulations on making goals.
I didn't do it.
Like, congratulations to the teachers.
No, no, definitely, congratulations to the teachers, congratulations to the team who's supporting the teachers, and please pass on to the teachers that we are very excited... It was very exciting, we really, student by student, set individual goals, and to see the validation of that really hard work, and also, very hard work and also attainable work, when you looked student by student on who you could move in the classes, it felt like, oh, this worked. So it was, it was exciting for teachers, so, thank you. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, now we'll move on to item number six, which is our district donation discussion, and I'll turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Earl Johnson and Principal Tua. Okay.
Hello. Can I sit?
Yes.
Thanks.
And thank you for being here the night before the first day of school.
Good night. Good morning. School. Yeah, I'm excited to see all the students tomorrow. I got to see the freshmen yesterday, and yeah, here we go. I believe you have all the documents here, and I just wanted to start off, first of all, by giving some history to Timview's fields as they existed five years ago and what we have today, and then go into the discussion of the overuse of the turf field, and then the inability to rotate our programs on the grass field, and then kind of take them in, and if you have any questions, we can try to answer them. I also have here my athletic director, Wendy, and I, head custodian, Jesse Nielsen, and I might defer to them if you have specific questions that I might not know the answers to, if that goes, okay? Okay. So five years ago, before construction and before our plans came into fruition, we had three open fields, and when I say open fields, they are multipurpose fields for various programs to use, and we had one closed field, meaning it was sports-specific, and that was our baseball field. And during that time, the only team that was displaced was our softball team, since 1976, and not until last year were they able to actually, you know, come on our, on our campus and participate along with the other programs. When that happened, and rightfully so, we lost one of these open fields. And when we look at this, the three open fields, sometime, the other thing that's unique about Provo City School District is that we have ninth through 12th grades, and that adds to more participants on our teams, and then historically, we have added more programs to UHSAA with lacrosse. And so with all these circumstances that surrounded how we were impacted as a school in our campus and facilities, five years ago, we started to have to send our marching band to, and our football team, to the Grand View Learning Center, and, and that took some wear on not only the field, but our neighbors in that area as well. And so we split our football and marching band, where currently, they are, marching band is at Edmond Elementary School, and then our football team, and sometimes even our lacrosse teams will go up there as well. And so, you know, when we look at our turf field, our stadium field, we are using it Monday through Friday during the fall from 2:30 to 9 o'clock at night, and this is rotating all, all the, not only the different sports, but the different levels within the sports field, access the field. And so, you know, when I, you know, I, I've looked at other campuses, and, you know, sometimes other high school camps, campuses, although it's not designated as a practice field, a grassy area is still used, save for a freshman sophomore team to practice in that area without the lines. We don't have that luxury at Timview High School, we're landlocked in all four areas, and, and it's, it's difficult, you know, when, even to take the... And, um, and it's, it's difficult, you know, when, even to take the timpani drums across, across the street to Edgemont and to have to take the wear and tear of, you know, the front ensemble, you know, um, that, it, it just, there's some wear and tear on the instruments. And, um, and so the question might be, why isn't it that we can use the grass field, the soccer field? And with marching band and football, within one week, we would, we would tear up that whole field and it would not be in use for the rest of the season. And so right now, over the summer, for about four weeks, we reseed that field, and it makes it so that we're not able to use it at all. And so we sometimes have found ways to use Centennial Middle School's field or the Provo City's, uh, field, uh, north of Centennial, um, because of this displacement. And so the question that I had to ask myself, is this an ongoing thing? To transport teams and equipment, there's a delay in actually being able to start practice at a certain time. The other thing is, we, we provide transportation because we believe that if we're going to sponsor these programs, that we need to transport our students. Um, and so we do do that, and I, I know students also like to drive themselves because they may have their own cars. Um, you know, so the, the factor of safety always comes to mind when we are, in, in a way, even though we provide transportation, we are, they're driving themselves to this place, um, Grandview Learning Center, year after year, season after season. And so, um, understanding this complexity, and we've been grateful to Harmony, um, at Edgemont Elementary and then, you know, to our maintenance department and, you know, helping us with the Grandview Learning Center and field. And we also have, uh, weightlifting equipment at the Grandview Center as well. Um, it's, it's a lot of work and time and cost and, and, and safety. And, um, so last year, we had a, a daughter who came forward and he, he could see the complexity, you know, um, being a father of a freshman student and asked us the questions, why, why are we displaced, where are we going, and how can I help with that? And so he offered, uh, some of money, seven hundred fifty thousand, uh, to contribute to turfing the soccer field so that we, it doesn't take on the wear and tear that a grassy field has, um, and that we could have our, our programs back on our campus, um, instead of displacing them in other areas. And, um, we are also looking over a three-year period, if, I don't know if you have the quote in hand, it's, I think, my number is sixty-six thousand? And, you know, how would we make up the difference of the, between the seven fifty and the, that amount? And we are looking at fundraising efforts and allocation from our school funds to help support, um, this, um, to happen. Now, in the language of my actual proposal, it initially, because we were considering this, um, it initially included lighting to the field, but I'm going to ask that we strike the lighting for now because we don't have quotes. Um, we have the donation and, um, we will address that at a different time if possible. So it's exclusive to the turf field, um, where the soccer area is, and with that donation of seven hundred fifty thousand. And, um, with the plan over three years, because we factored in that it would be probably three hundred thousand in addition to the seven fifty, probably even more, um, to help close that, that gap. And you, if you can go to this spreadsheet and, um, see that in the fall, we have up to fifteen teams that are displaced, and then in the spring, fourteen teams. And, um, we'd like to be able to take care of our students on our campus.
So Melanie, could you explain a little more detail, if it changes from grass to turf, how that does affect how many teams can use it? Are we still going to have teams that have a hard time getting scheduled?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can rotate them in quicker. We won't have damaged surfaces. And so if we think of like, uh, marching band, if the front ensemble has the most friction on the field, and then you count, uh, our, our football players with their cleats, again, it's that friction and that wear on the field. And so, um, by having a turfed field, that we can have marching band and football within a week's time rotating off the, on and off the football field without it having, so it, it doesn't have that same wear and tear. But we, if we had two fields that are turfed, we can rotate, we can rotate a number of, of teams and not say, okay, we can't use this field anymore because the, the gra, we're down to the bare bones and the grass, the grassy surface. And so.
And you said that that needs to be received in almost yearly?
Oh, yearly for sure. Yeah, yeah, every July, we, we shut down the field for a month. Um, I'm looking at my A.D. here and I, if she could also make a comment or corrections.
Hello, school board? So I just would like to add, in addition to that, anytime there's moisture, that grass field becomes unusable because it becomes unfit. And so overuse of the grass field when there's moisture in the grass, um, nobody can use it. I would also like to add, when we said four weeks during the summer, our grass field was actually closed down.
Two months?
More than that, longer than that, in order for it to reseed and grow properly. And so, um, we had, excuse me, girls soccer at Rock Canyon, holding, um, their soccer camp, summer soccer camp, and marching band was at Edgemont, um, because we had one field. And then it, it is, one other thing I'd like to add, turf is hot. And, and so in the summer months, you cannot, our teams, we try to keep them off the turf because, uh, in the middle of the day, because the heat, um, could cause other problems for our, our kids. And so, it just, and even though the turf is hot though, it, it would allow, an additional turf field would allow us to, to alternate teams in the morning and then later in the evening, um, in the summer months. But right now, they're displaced and they, because we have to shut the, the field down to reseed, um, yeah, we have to use alternative, um, field spaces.
So kind of building on Jennifer's question, would this alleviate, like, ten percent of the problem, fifty percent of the problem, all of the problem? Like, I, I don't, I don't even have an idea.
I would say probably eighty to ninety percent of the problem. You know, because there are still times where we might have to ask, um, Edgemont Elementary, you know, um, but we can see the ability to rotate teams. Um, yeah. And, yeah, there's a, also, you know, more and more of these days, teams want to practice all year round. So if you look at the fall schedule, we've got lacrosse on there, but lacrosse isn't until spring, and so we're rotating them in as well.
Um, this might be a question for both of you, but what is, what do you think of cost savings in transportation?
Oh, gosh.
I haven't seen the bills, but, I mean, I mean, because if that were something that was being taken away, I mean, that's something that could be towards, go towards the hundred thousand dollars that she's talking about.
Which is why.
Yeah.
She's committing part of her budget, some of that, that she has been spending, that you've been, your budget's.
I haven't. Yeah, I have been paying it out of all six hours, and it feels like it was a student fee, like, that they needed to pay for, so, so that's something, I, I mean, so yes, that's, you know, part of the funding could be redistributed to, um, pay for the field over the three-year period, as well as fundraising efforts.
If I could.
Yes.
From like a student athlete perspective, I would say like, that grass, that grass field that we use is pretty unusable. There's like, a lot of like, holes or like potholes, you could say, in the grass, and everyone's really reluctant to practice on it, and I would say having another turf would just speed up and optimize that kind of time. And a lot of teams also want to not practice until like nine P.M., for example. So if we have two teams, like, being able to practice on a field and having two fields at the same time, I think that would alleviate a lot of like, kids' schedule burdens as well.
Yeah.
Just so everyone knows, is it possible to put like a map of Timbuktu up so people know exactly where the field is? Because I'm still a little lost in exactly where this is on campus.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Because if it is in the location, I think it is, uh, there's always drainage problems, right?
How about an artificial turf, you can fix that? You can't fix that with regular turf.
I don't know, I mean, I know how to do this.
That's the.
But she has.
That's southwest of the current stadium.
Well, well, I'm putting that out, I have another question. How, what's the longevity of the turf field?
Ten years.
Ten years, so every ten years we would need to be replacing.
The other ask is, you know, to allocate funds, uh, to set aside for replacement over the ten-year span.
So the district would help pay for replacement, but are we being asked to help pay for any of the?
Initial?
The initial?
No.
Okay, so all that will come from your school budget or your fundraising?
And just to clarify, the new construction, as we complete true construction, this area won't be impacted by any of the proposed construction plans, right?
That's correct.
Can I, oh, I'm over waiting. Um, I'm assuming Provo High does not have, we're going out.
Just, you can, you can, is there?
Right here.
Does Provo High have similar issues?
So, yes, we know, Provo High actually has, um, two grass practice fields, so they have one more space than Timbuktu right now. They have a south and a north. Um, ultimately, that can go, I don't want to get too far ahead, ultimately, the goal would be to, to bring on Timbuktu, um, and then in five years, bring one up for Provo, and then every ten years.
Every five years?
Five years.
But, yeah, every school, every ten, so every five, you'd be re-turfing one of those.
That way you can have a turf field as well at Provo.
I think, I think there are a lot, I just want to mention a couple of things too. But when, when UHSA brings on a sport, let's say lacrosse, you're not bringing on a team, you're actually bringing on three.
Yeah.
So bringing on sophomore J.B. varsity. So when they brought on boys and girls lacrosse, that's six more teams in the practice space. Also, and I might be, um, you know, speaking out of turn here, but I also know I've been up to Timbuktu times in there. P.E. classes are looking for places to throw class, and I know, one day I was up there and you had three different classes on your stadium because there was no other P.E. facility. So P.E. class has also taken toll on our campuses at high school level as well, so that will alleviate some of the pressure there. Um, yeah, I think, and, you know, you mentioned, why can't we use it? Well, you can't have a football team go out, dig up a field and then expect to have soccer or something play on it, so just little things like that. You know, I'm, a lot of, a lot of high schools now, um, the, uh, the bar is a field house. We're not talking field houses here yet.
Oh, she said yet, because he would really like to.
But, but.
I get calls from constituents talking about it all the time.
But what, what those field houses are providing is they're providing extra practice space for everyone.
And it's year-round.
And it's year-round. Um, so this would be a step, you know.
Moving in the right direction. So this is Timbuktu Drive here. Our Timbuktu campus is up here. This is the football field. So Benus Park is on the southwest side. This is the soccer field right here that we are proposing to re-turf. Softball is here. Softball's here.
It's just south of the tennis court, right?
Yes, it's just south of the tennis courts, and it's two different elevations from the softball field to the soccer field.
So then I was wrong. It was in a completely different place than I had even known. So it's a good thing we put maps up because otherwise, I don't know where this is.
Yeah.
I need to see, like, I know there was a little picture of a soccer field, but it needs to be in relation to where's the rest of the school.
Right, right.
Every time you come in.
Is this Edgemont Elementary over here?
Yep, that's Edgemont.
Okay.
Well, that's a church.
Well, that's actually up here.
Right there.
Right there.
Right here.
Right there.
And they, they practice on the left.
That practice is right here.
Okay.
Yeah. We've had football practice here a few times as well, and, yeah.
Question. So the proposal also includes that the donor would like the name of the field to be in his family's name.
Yes.
What would that look like?
You know, that's a good question. I, I.
How would that feel? Would we have a pla, like, what would it look like?
I, I will have to go back and ask him unless Wendy knows. Um, he didn't get into the specifics of what that was. He didn't, he didn't specify, okay, I want a big sign, but he just wanted it. But I can go back and ask him what that means, naming the field. I hear that there's a policy on that.
There is a policy.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, because I think, I think that would just need to be clear before we approve it, so everybody's on the same page with that. Gina, did you settle on that?
Yes. Um, I'm curious, I, it sounds like it's very needed, I don't have a problem with that. Do we have money in the upkeep cycle to add this for one school and then another school? Like, I, and I'm mindful of this because we're going into truth and taxation and we're probably going to get hammered, so I just want to make sure that this is something we can write off.
Well, when you, it's a ten-year replacement cycle, so you're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we have to put aside for.
For each turf.
For each turf.
So three hundred thousand dollars a year because you're dealing one.
Correct. So a hundred and fifty thousand additional to what we're already doing.
So a hundred and fifty thousand for football and soccer? Or a hundred and fifty thousand for football and a hundred and fifty thousand for soccer?
So a hundred and fifty thousand for Timbuktu. And we also have Provo High.
Yeah, so it's three hundred, it's three hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain two artificial turf fields at both schools. Right. That's what it would cost.
And that's, are we already doing that with the two turf fields that there are?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be an additional hundred and fifty for each school? Do we have the money?
Well, it's an additional hundred and fifty period. We already have the hundred and fifty thousand for both schools' turfs as they speak, so it's another hundred and fifty thousand if we were to do both schools. Right now, we're only asking one.
Okay.
So it's three hundred thousand dollars total, because you're looking at three million dollars in turfs every ten years. Now, we're not doing every turf the same year. We are on about a three-year rotation, so you've got, we're a couple of years out now of Timbuktu, so it's actually kind of perfect timing of getting that, this one in, and then a few years down the road, maybe sliding another one in so that it's not, you know, one year where we're doing five million dollars in the turf. Um, so yes, it's an additional hundred and fifty thousand on top of what we're doing.
So this would fall under the?
Just our capital.
No, the, the committee.
Yes, this would be part of the capital facilities committee. But it's part of the, as we do a lot of those, um, plans throughout the year, like, we have a concrete budget and an HVAC budget and all of that, it would start lining up in those kinds of things.
Uh, before we go to Melanie, if your question, just want to make it clear, this is not on the agenda to approve tonight. This is for us to all consider, and then we'll put it on the agenda for next time. So, Melanie?
Do we need to put a special fence around this field?
I, I would prefer that that happened.
That would be awesome.
But that's another additional cost.
So you're going to have to put a fence properly around it.
I mean, there is.
The area's got a fence everywhere except on the north side, right?
It does, so it would be three sides, three sides. The west side is our defense, and so it's to close the.
And we want.
Emily?
Also, we might need to think of, if, if it was going to be provoke getting one eventually, that we don't have seven hundred thousand dollars being donated for that.
I would, I would say the way that you're gonna, wow, I love how I'm going to say this, and Duffin's the one that's got to figure out the money, but these would be things that you can use, like, to, like, fund balance for and different things because they can be one-time expenditures, so to get them on that rotation, you could dip into your fund balance to do that, to get it started, and then your replacement cycles will go into your regular budget. Am I speaking out of turn there?
Although if someone wanted to give a donation.
Well, we would be, I would be really happy if we could find someone. Yeah. Sorry, I mean.
Oh, no, you're fine. I just, to contextualize that for myself, so essentially if you're looking at the district vantage point, we have a donor and we'll, in theory, we need to do this at both schools eventually. Someone can help cover half of the cost to do this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of a way to look at it, right?
I would see it almost as a two million dollar cost to do both schools and we're getting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's, it's, you know, whether it's coming from the school's budget to help compensate that, it's all our district money, right? So, so in our mind, it's, it's gonna be that additional money that goes into Timview and then making sure that that's provided also for Provo. Cause it would be a game changer for them too.
And I also just add, I think it's important, I know we have to look at making sure that we're being equitable in these decisions. It is also true that having those two grass fields at Provo High has allowed them not to have to transport and pay to move their students to as many alternate locations. So we have to keep it all in mind. Yes, the turf is nicer than the grass. Also, there is just less space right now for the teams at Timview to practice on. Um, and that, we have to be mindful of that, I feel like.
That's really where the equity piece came in for, from my perspective is it's about where your space and access is. And right now for Timview athletes, that access can be a barrier for them participating um because of those restrictions that are in place and I, I don't like that. I don't, I don't want there to be those barriers in place for any student across either of our schools.
Okay, any other questions for Principal T?
I just wanted to say that I will talk to the donor and ask him, you know, what his, what he was thinking in making a deal. Whether it's a sign, all of the different policy and get back with you too.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven of our study session. We'll turn over to business minister Devin Daly for two large purchase requests.
So we have two large purchase requests today. There's one for concrete fill and fixing at both Provo High. There's some cracking in the sidewalks, um, which is just natural wear and then up at the transportation building. So those are the two projects that are gonna be covered with that cost.
And that's, that was one of the questions I was gonna ask us about the Provo High concrete was, because it's new, that's just normal? Or like, are we seeing that like at other schools, like similar?
I, I, part of it could be where it's at. I mean, it's on the west side, new construction, there's some settling up the ground. So there's, it, it could be partially that, but it is, we do concrete seal every single summer. So this was just a little bit of a more involved, uh, cement in the, in the sidewalks.
So has this already happened or?
Nope, it hasn't even, we don't have a P O for it yet. We, I like bringing things before we contract. I mean, if that, a piece of this that is the most critical is transportation, which is only thirty five thousand. But the, the Provo High does need to be done.
So when it, when are these?
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, when are, when are these scheduled to take, like, to be fixed?
Uh, most likely once we get them on the schedule, end of August, beginning of September.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, yeah, I have a question. I mean, I saw in our large warrants that we use this company frequently over the summer. I'm assuming per about through what you're talking about in terms of concrete work.
Yep.
Is this, since it is such a large amount, something that then we go out though and get several bids from different companies for? Cause I noticed we had three different expenses to this company in July.
So we did do, we did do a.
So I'm just wondering, is that something we bid out to other people or do we just always use this company?
So we did an R F P in May for a concrete seal that's good for five years. So we have three or four.
Okay, great.
Contractors that we selected and can use at a specific price, so.
Great, I just didn't know how it worked. Thank you.
Again, I just wanted, about the schedule with the boilers, like, I, I'm just very conscious that frankly, when they redid the roof and it was during the school year and it was very disruptive and when they, there were smells and everybody had to evacuate the roofs and.
Replacing a boiler is not quite as, as extensive as, as replacing a roof. Um, the boilers on our rotation to be replaced, it's original to the building. So we're getting to be close to twenty years old and it needs to be replaced so we don't have all those kids. Now, it's, it's working, but we're trying to get into the habit of replacing things around a timetable rather than when something breaks. But it's been our experience that twenty years is about the max that we can get from them. So it is a lot less disruptive to replace a boiler. And we want to do it before we actually have to kick it on to heat the building, the building, um, so that there is no disruption. So you stole my thunder. The second purchase request is the boiler. Sorry.
Gosh, damn.
No, you're fired. No, I'm like, wait a second, did I say that already? I did pretty quickly, but I guess it is on the, on the, um, the agenda. So yes, the second one is, is the replacement of that boiler at Provo.
Any other questions? These are both on the agenda to approve tonight at our business meeting. Okay, then we will move on to item eight, our truth and taxation F A Qs for Devin. And then just so everyone knows, tonight at the hearing at seven o'clock, before we take public comment, Devin will be giving just like an overview of.
So I'll give you a little bit more information. Right, yeah, so I, I'll give you a little bit of information now. Everybody knows me, my little information always grows, so I'll try to be super quick. And then we'll just, we'll use the same presentation in the hearing, but um, I'll go through it a lot faster. Lisa, do you want me to turn you around or can you see the presentation?
Oh, turn me around, please. Thank you.
I'll just speak directly to you. There we go. All right.
Oh, perfect.
Um, so let's go, start on the first page. So just a quick overview of why we're doing a truth and taxation. Sorry, Bonnie. Okay, so these are the, these are the kind of some of the limitations and some of the things that we were worried about as we were preparing for our twenty six, our F Y twenty six budget. So we received only a four percent increase in the W P U, which is just a portion of our revenue. So when you're looking at total state revenue as opposed to whole revenue, we, the four percent doesn't cover the whole thing. It covers a smaller percentage. There was a thirty percent increase in health insurance, which represented about four and a half million dollars. So in reference, the four percent increase in the W P U, just in that one line item was two and a half million. And the amount for insurance was four and a half million. Um, our substitute teachers, um, in the last several years have gone from five hundred thousand to one point five million dollars. So that was a big increase. The county health department, um, has gone from about two hundred and fifty thousand six years ago to about a little over a million this year. Um, our S O E P, which is Student Online Education Plan, Plan, uh, or Program, sorry. Um, that's the online program there, up at the state that they have that allows students to do credit recovery. It also allows for original credit, but there are some things that, um, we can do to mitigate some of that. That was about one point two million dollars this year that we had to send back to the state for those credits that were done on that program. We have always the retiree medical coverage. That is something, so a lot of, there's been a lot of question about our fund balance. About fourteen million dollars of our fund balance is set aside to help pay for that retiree benefit long term. Luckily, and we were waiting until we had a sunset where then we could start drawing down from that. We're getting really close, uh, but we did receive a twenty five percent increase in our retiree health insurance for United Healthcare this year as well. So we went from about eight hundred and fifty thousand to one point two million. Teacher admin salaries, the teacher and admin salaries are both lower than our neighboring districts. So we lose a lot of teachers every year and we all have a lot of value in our teachers. So that was another thing that we really wanted to address. And then always at the bottom of the line, bottom of the list is our tax increase. We don't like to increase taxes. It's not an easy thing to do, as some people seem to think. So it's not something that we like to do because we really are mindful of our, our taxpayers. So let's keep going. Um, so how can we fix it? So one of the things that we've done is put a fee in place for S O E P. So if a student is taking a course in S O E P for cred, or for grade replacement because they failed the class, that is not something that the district has to pay for. We can actually charge families and parents for that. Also, if a student wants to take, and I, I'm being facetious, but an underwater basket weaving class instead of, you know, just because it sounds like fun and one of our schools doesn't have it, they can sign up for it. But if it's not on their graduation plan, we can also require them to pay for it. So classes that are for original credit, for students who are planning on graduating early or that are just needing space in their schedule, we do approve. And so that will cut down that a little bit. Our interest revenue has been really favorable the last couple of years, which has helped us cover some of that cost for our insurance. So we did a transfer to the, the insurance fund at the end of F Y twenty five of some of the revenue that we brought in extra. Um, already some of that's been used before the end of June, because our claims were really high in June and the end of May. Um, we eliminated a couple of positions, one position in communi, uh, communications, one position in my department. Um, that was approved a year, a year and a half ago, two years ago, we decided not to fill that. So we're trying to be really mindful of, of making sure that the district office positions are really necessary. And then our, again, our biggest, our biggest focus has been on those teacher salaries. And so we, um, also elected to do an increase, um, of, uh, on the base salary to teachers and then the longevity that we did last year to help continue on the, the path that we were on last year, which has been really nice. Okay, let's keep going. So, did I put a second? What have we done?
No, it's, if the first one was half fixed, then what have we done?
Oh, okay, we'll skip it again. See, look, I've got a slide that we don't even need. So some of the information that I get all the time, every time we've done a community meeting, when we said we're gonna have to increase taxes to meet operating expenses, the first thing that I hear all the time is, have you cut any positions? So I'm just gonna show you kind of our thought process. And this is gonna look really bad on me because there's some things that I don't have time to do. So as employees are set up, um, they're set up at a certain F T E level. If you were to run the report today, um, our F T Es are showing really high. So for last year, we were set up at nineteen thirty seven point three eight. So what happens is, is that let's say you have, you hire five aides at a school and you hire them at, at four hours a day, so a point five F T E. But they only work point one, so the school ends up hiring five more to make up that difference. Well, they're still all in the system at point five. So it's not an accurate reflection, but the way that we put them in is so principals have a good idea of what the maximum that's gonna cost if they work those number of hours. Um, so the other thing is, is we have a very interesting phenomenon since COVID. We have a very mobile workforce. So you have, we have a lot more mobility during the year, a lot of people quit, a lot of teachers quit. Or they move to different positions or they move salary, on the salary schedule because they receive some education. Well, as those are in there, they're still one and then the new person's hired and they're still one. And so you're counting them double, but it's the same position. So the replacement is one, the old one is one. So what I did is I went through and calculated what that was, what the actual F T E was based on what they worked. And you can see there's an almost five hundred F T E difference in what was set up. And I just haven't had time the last few years to go through that and make sure that that is all, all queued together. We report our F T Es to the state at the beginning of the year, so it doesn't have time to grow to the extra F T Es that are there. And this is not an audited part of my financial statements. It is a information only part. So you can see.
Because the part that's audited is the actual money that's spent.
Correct.
Which is demonstrating that when we actually look at the budget, the budget doesn't actually reflect that we've expanded our F T Es by hundreds and hundreds.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. So when you look at, at the report, those, some of the numbers may seem large and it may look like we've increased people, but our budget doesn't reflect that increase. So also the question is, is well, why don't you take, get rid of some of the programs? Well, we have some really popular programs that really make a difference in families' lives. And, and as we talk to parents and community members, most of them don't want to see those programs go away. So you're looking at, at high dollar costs like D L I and music and, um, social workers. Just those three programs together are close to four and a half million dollars. So you have to gauge it. Um, these are all programs that are very important, but they're also programs that we'll keep evaluating and determine whether there is real necessity for it or if it's something that's feasible going forward. And then why does the district spend so much money on administration? Well, there's, if you look at other districts' organizational charts, there's always a lot more people than what they're reporting, mostly because of their duties. They're reporting them on their financials based on what they do rather than where they work. So for a long time, that's, we've, we did them as where they worked because they were focusing on educate, or on, at the district office level. But their main job is supporting schools and teachers. So we adjusted some of that, really by putting some of the people that were at the district as instructional coaches or as curriculum specialists, who are supporting instruction, not making district wide decisions. So you'll see, back in twenty three, we had sixty. And then as we've done a lot of that attrition and moving things to schools, it's gone down. And this is not just district admin, this is also central services. So you're talking business office, H R, communications, um, board, all of that, all of that is included in there. Okay, so let's keep going. So now we're gonna just go through quickly the tax information. So this year's proposed rate is a double oh seven oh one seven, which is lower than last year's. Um, and it actually matches our two thousand twenty two rate. Also, lower than the years prior to that, but we only have the five year comparison on that. You'll see that part of this is charter school. That's set by the state based on how many kids in our, in our community go to charter schools. And the basic rate, which is set by the state, and they use that to help provide support for the W P U. So just as a, as a, an interesting fact, on the basic rate, they divide the W P U. How they fund that is half through, or partly through in context and then partly from this. So if you bring in more than what you have been projected to bring in, you actually get your state revenue cut. So you only get that W P U amount from that basic levy. All right, so the new tax rate will generate four million dollars, just a little over four million, four million thirty four one seventy seven. That will cover those, the increases to teachers and to admin that we needed to do to make sure that we were a little bit more competitive.
So let me ask this question that I've had. So if the tax rate is going down, why would my taxes maybe go up as a result of paying for most of the rest?
Well, one of the reasons why we have been able to bring it down is because the valuations in Provo have gone up. Valuations in Provo went up about one point two billion dollars in the year, in this tax year. The average home increased by point nine percent. Businesses were more, businesses and agricultural were about two and a half to four percent, depending on what type of business they were. So some people, I, I've talked to some people whose tax bill has actually gone down because their, their, um, home did not increase much higher than the, than this county average and others who are going up a little bit. And one of the things to keep in mind is sometimes some of the other levies that the district doesn't have control over, don't report an increase or a decrease. It's only the three rates, which are our board, local and capital, that are reported on there as, as increased or decreased. So some of those have gone, the other ones have gone down a little bit. You can see our charter school went down by quite a bit. That amount on the tax liability is less than it was before. So when we look at it, we look at total tax that comes to the school district.
When you, um, so if the valuations are going up, isn't that when the district's getting more money?
No, so this is an interesting thing that people don't understand a lot of times. Is when the valuations go up, they, we don't collect extra revenue. Our, our rate is based on the revenue that we are budgeted to get. So they, it's actually backed into, so they have our revenue here and then they have the valuation that they do the proposed rate on. And they divide that, or they divide the amount we need by the valuation and they set the rate based on that. The exceptions are, your general obligation debt is always based on what you actually need. need. So you give them the amount you need, they divide that by the total, the total assessed valuation, and that's that rate for this, which is why this has gone down. Next year, you'll see it go down a little bit further because this year is actually our biggest year of, for debt service payments for a while. Did I answer that one well enough?
You did great.
So let's go to the next page. Oh, go ahead.
Just to be back on that, so I do, I have heard, well, for this many years, I, my taxes, my property taxes have continued to go up despite, you know, me saying, no, we haven't, we haven't done truth and taxation since 2022. Is that similar to this in the sense that that also depends on your valuation of your home, right?
It's all about your valuation.
Sometimes more or less based on how your home's backed.
So let's, let's go through a couple of scenarios. So let's say somebody over on, on the Grandview Hill, their house goes up in value by 10% and someone else's house goes up by 25%. That person that went up 25%, they are now carrying a higher burden than someone who went up lower. So as those valuations go up and as the percentage of the valuation increases, that's going to make a difference. So valuations went up, we have gone more than double over the last about eight years, I think. About eight years ago, we were $5.5 billion, and now we're at, it might be a little bit longer because, you know, you do it for so long, all the numbers run together, but it has been that way. So this is a comparison of all of the districts. Well, not all the districts, just the ones that we were looking at overall. So you can see, I have this sorted by enrollment. So bigger districts are at the top, smaller districts start, go down to the bottom. And this is their taxable from last year and their market value from this year. Now, keep in mind that this market value does not include tax-exempt property. They do not even add that into the taxable value at all, or market value of a city. Then you have the centrally assessed, those are your power plants, airports that are not government-owned. And then this is the taxable percentage. So the lower this percentage is, the more homes are involved. So in Provo, you can see 65% is taxable of the total valuation and the, if this were 55%, that would mean that every single taxpayer was a homeowner because you have the 55%, the 45% exemption, and you have the 55% amount that your taxes end up being based on. So we are one of the lower ones. There's only two that are lower than us and only by a small amount. So you have, let's see, you have Weber and then you have Canyons. So, and Canyons is, is pretty residential-heavy, and the ones that are higher, so Park City, that means that there's a lot of businesses. So we need businesses to be in there to, in order to get that up. But that is why the homeowners-
Second homes.
Second homes.
Second homes still get that 55% exemption. Here's a fun fact. I was, spent a lot of time on, with, on the phone with the county over the last couple of weeks trying to glean as much information as possible. Second homes, if they're true second homes, they don't qualify for the 45% exemption. But if you rent them, they do. So if someone has a home that they're renting, all of the apartment buildings, those all get the 55, they're, they're all at the 45%. So, or they get the 45% exemption. If you, the, the exceptions are in Airbnb. An Airbnb does not get that exception. They actually have to pay the full amount. But rental homes, so Airbnb's and true second homes that no one's living in, that those get the, those don't get the exemption, but every other rental property or home get that rental exemption or the residential exemption. So this does actually impact our homeowners. That, that really does impact why the homeowners are taking on a bigger burden. And a lot of the districts that are in the same, in the same boat feel the same. But as you can see, the ones, the districts with the higher enrollment can assess a smaller per-student amount. So when you're looking at, here's their, here's the amount that they would bring in with their tax revenue, this is what one single increment on the taxes, .0001. So we went up .000364, so a little over three and a half increments. Okay? So one increment brings in, and this is, these numbers are based on prior year evaluations, so these aren't going to be exact, but this is, this is a pretty good example. So this is the amount of tax revenue they're going to bring in and then per student. Average in these districts is 5905 per student that people, that the districts are assessing, and we're at 5668. So we are actually lower than the average of these districts. If you had Park City in, who assesses $43,000 per student, then it's much higher. I chose to leave the map because it skewed the numbers way too much.
Which that also means Park City's basic levy subsidizes a lot of the state's WPU.
They do not receive any state revenue. Yep. So that basic levy that they bring in, because they do it on an average of what, of what they need, so they take the whole, the whole state average, they divide that by what they need and then, or the, divide what they need by the whole state valuation, that's where they get the amount. And so the amount that they get is actually more than what the WPU, WPU needs to be.
Does anyone have any more questions? Or we do?
I, I have-
Truth and taxation.
One. When was, so the last truth and taxation was in '22, when was the next closest? It was in 2020. So here's the, this number right, oh, not on here. The next column is how many times we've done truth and taxation, how many times each of these districts have done truth and taxation since 2017. We've done it four times in the last eight years. So our goal was to do it every other year, and that's 2017 through 2026. So this is a nine-year period. So we skipped a year last year because we had the revenue from the interest that we felt like we didn't need to do it quite then. But part of the reason for that is so that inflation can be captured on a little bit of a more regular basis than large increases more regularly. So interesting, so Tooele, I believe, is either at four or five. They're actually going up almost 11 increments. Box Elder's going up almost 14 increments. And they also have done truth and taxation four or five times over the last few years. Alpine has done it seven. They win. Or lose, depending on how, and how you think about it.
What is our max that we can go to? Or the 007, 07 max?
Oh, we have a ton of room. Yeah, our ma, so go back a slide for me. This 1650, I think, we, I think we have a 25 increment max. So we actually have eight, a lot.
And where do we have to be to get our state matching funds? Like, we can't let it fall below a certain increment?
Correct, 21 increments, but we have, we're, we're above the 21 increments.
21 over the several different levies?
These two. You're, not these two, these two. So you're at 29.5 right now. So in order to get the full match, and they do it separately, they calculate it separately. So this, you need to be at your max to get their max match, which our max is 13 increments. This is where you would have to go to the voters to be able to increase that voted levy maximum. And that has a maximum in a state of 20, but our maximum is 13. And then the other one, it, we have a lot of room. We, we won't ever go that high. But you can see, go back to, or go forward, you can see there are still, so Nevo has a higher rate, Tooele has a higher rate, and then Nevo and Box Elder are less than one increment away from us. So we are still really close. We're the seventh highest right now, which is, you know, higher than what we like to be, but with the limitations that we have based on what we have in taxable as opposed to market value, that, that does make a big difference. Plus, there is a difference in how many students you're spreading it over.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Wendy for our policy first reading.
Okay. I'm going to take over the screen.
Let's turn her back around so we can, so she can join the group. Do you want to see the screen or everyone else?
I don't know, what's going to be on the screen?
Just the policy summary that's going to, that's in Board Docs anyway.
Oh, I've got, I've got that, so I want to see everyone else.
So I created a summary of the different policies and it is loaded into Board Docs, but I just thought, these policies today are pretty quick. These are mostly situations where the policy hasn't been updated in some cases since 2013, and there's some language changes in legislation, and so we're just, you know, making those adjustments. So this will be the first reading, so Policy 1001, board legal status. You'll notice in lines 13 through 15, we had to add the definition of body corporate to match that definition in state law. And then line 24 talks about, is more, it's much more thorough in this particular policy than in our other policy about when you're changing the number of total board members and states that once you go to seven board members, like what we have, even if our student population were to decrease, we would not decrease from that seven members of the board. And then lines 26 through 38, you'll just notice that that's just replacing lines 40 to 41 for greater clarification. So a recommendation on this is just place it on the agenda for a second reading and a possible vote on August 26th. Do you have any questions on that one?
We'll be putting all of these on the draft policies review?
Yes. Every single one of them. I mean, I don't know that people will talk about, especially the next one. The next one's really cool because it just changed one word. So Policy 1005, board legal status, the model policy that came from the state said to change policies to rules. And then really what we updated is the links to all of the Utah code because those links were outdated. So we would put that up for recommendation.
I have a question on that one.
You have?
The order of the different duties, like, do we have to keep it in a certain order or could we move eminent domain further down? I think it's less important than employing personnel.
You can do whatever you would like to do if you feel like that that makes a difference in terms of how the policy is interpreted.
One of those like, hey, eminent domain, before we, it's just the message we're sending.
Like that's just something we, we're likely, you know, facing with.
You guys are, someone's taking notes on my policies, right? I have people to do that. We can, we can do that. We can, we can absolutely. Do you want it to be last?
Like right before the fulfill other statutory?
You got it.
Yeah.
Totally do that.
Okay.
Thanks. Let's see, next one is Policy 1008, board member eligibility. We added the language of the constitutional oath must be given and signed and has to be filed with the VA. We did not have that in language before. And then it just had a conflict of interest reference, and it's more specific about they cannot be employees, board members cannot be employees of the district, and then we referenced the actual policy. Any questions on that one? Okay, you can tell the policy committee was really excited last time.
It was.
You were really, you were really sad you weren't there, weren't you? Okay, Policy 1110, student board members and student advisory council. We needed to add language to align with state law. This says that if a board is actually creating student board positions, it goes through a petition process, which is what we already did to create our student board members. Lines 41 through 43, we had laid out the term of office in the application. We added this to make it in the policy itself. Lines 46 through 49 clarify student board member participation, that they may participate in, that should be open board meetings. You're not going to participate in an open board member, but in an open board meeting you would participate, and that they are not voting members of the board. But obviously can provide all of the input and ask questions and all of those things. Lines 52 to 55, student board members are entitled to expense allowances but not entitled to pay or benefits. And 58 through 60, in case we do anything wild and crazy, they're not liable for anything that the board does. Any questions on that one? Oh, let me do the procedure first and then. On lines 129 to 130, on the procedure, we clarified that the announcement of student board members should happen as quickly as possible. We have that as an April 1st deadline, but we wanted to just make sure that it's done before the beginning of the school year. Yes, Gina.
So you said that that was, these are updates to state law, correct? Because I think what we had before was, I'm going to lines, line 32, actually line 35, we've said 50 students. Is it actually 500 in all?
That's, that's for the petition to start a board, a board number, not to actually run as a, to be selected.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, do that.
A petition for what?
To actually put in place student board members.
So that's what Neilan and Will and those guys did.
Yep, when they brought the-
Okay, because I was confused too. I thought that meant the application.
Mine too.
Do we need a-
That would be a little bit of work. Also, can, I just wanted to make sure people know that the non-voting status of a student board member is based on state law.
Yes. That is correct. Do you want us to add clarifying language to that, Jennifer? So that says appointment of student, student, we can add clarifying language, so it sets up the process versus the actual appointment.
Yes, because yeah, right now makes it sound like I'm, we appointed Rachel, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And especially since we already have this in place and this policy isn't as relevant right now. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay, we can absolutely do that. Board member elections, policy number 1100, 21 to 24. We actually updated this policy last year in January because we added on lines 18 through 20 that the deadline for filing for state school, or excuse me, for district board members is determined by the Utah State Legislature and that they're supposed to look at the Utah County Elections Office. They want us to actually put in when that filing deadline is, and so this comes straight from state law. So we just aligned that. So that's why there is an update to that one. We already did that, so. A recommendation is to put all of these on the website. People can put in comments. And then, we would just bring this to August 26th. Sometimes we leave them up for a little bit longer, but these are pretty minor changes. We don't feel like that's necessary.
On that one, line 47 crosses that reapportioned and puts in local, but if I'm understanding correctly, I think reapportioned is the correct word we want.
It is. You're not supposed to use the word reapportioned, I don't think. You're supposed to use the word redistricting.
Well, because we have reapportioned up in the one-
I don't know. I'll double-check that, but that comes straight from model policy. So I do not go through this in, in any way, shape, or form.
That's all from model.
Like do this, this all comes from model policy, but I can double-check. So if you'll just click that, there is a question on line 46.
Which would be also 43 if we're looking to use that one.
Okay. If after redistricting, two or more members whose terms extend beyond redistricting live within a local school or district, the members involved shall select one member. I'll put it, I'll figure it out. Okay. Okay, that's it. Policy's done.
Way to dive through that.
Well, they weren't very, they weren't very complicated.
Caught us up a little bit here.
Okay.
We will let Wendy and Devin keep going here with our boundary and feasibility study update, item number 10.
Okay. So I just want to, I feel like everyone is waiting for everybody else to decide what to do about boundaries. So I just, so in talking, we just thought we would maybe talk about some different options and get some direction on which way you want to go with this. So if you look at this particular, and I'm focusing on elementary for, for the time being just for a moment. This is our current utilization based on our boundaries of each of our buildings. So you'll notice some of our buildings, we were really trying to do this boundary and feasibility study to align things, make sure that we didn't have anything that was completely outside of the realm of, of where we were being completely inefficient. When you start moving into these purples, you're, you're starting to move into that zone, right? Even the yellow a little bit, what you're trying to go for is to get most of it into the green. So then, of course, our boundary committee comes together, they just, they figure out where all of the students are coming from, even students that are coming from outside of the boundary. And they went through and created a proposal about where those elementary school boundaries could be that would maximize the utilization rate, which is what you see here. And this is if, this column is just if you're utilizing just the students that live in the boundaries. This is if you're adding in students that are- This is if you're adding in students that are currently going to that school and assuming that they'll continue to permit into that school through open enrollment processes, then you could maximize that a little bit more. So kind of keeping that in mind, what, what the Boundary and Feasibility, what, I don't remember, MGT, is that the company, said, there's really no crisis in Provo City School District. And so now what comes about is, do we keep the boundaries where they're at, in particular for elementary schools, or do we shift a few things to maximize the utilization of our, of our buildings? Now, in so doing, a couple of the, of the places where they talked about this, and this is in particular, where we were asking them to clean up some of this boundary in this area here, so that we didn't have kids in the same neighborhoods, some going to Spring Creek, some going to Sunset View, and some going to Franklin. And in so doing, that did help utilize our spaces better as, as a result of that. So the question is, then, then the next question that comes in, as we're trying to evaluate programs, one of the programs that we now have a pretty intensive subcommittee moving that will be ready for all-day board meeting is our Dual Language Immersion Committee that will have some initial proposals, but based on decisions that we make about that, is that something you want to wait until those recommendations go through and stakeholders are brought in, meaning parents and all of those pieces, before you even clean up the boundaries? I, I don't feel like this proposal is changing the boundaries too extensively, but you could end up changing it, and then now you have to come back and do it again if you're going to make some decisions about dual language immersion. If, if they come back and say, we're just going to keep dual language immersion the way that it is, then you probably go ahead and clean up the boundary sooner rather than later. For middle school and for high school, the problem is you can't really, one of the issues that's coming up is that your middle school Shoreline has more space than you actually have students at this point, and Centennial's starting to hit that maximum level. But as soon as you clean up that boundary, then you create hardship at the high school, because Provo High is more at capacity than Tempe is. And if you notice, when, when you're looking at the total number of students that are going back and forth, it's almost like a, a pretty even exchange. So for example, at Centennial, I've got 967 and 64 coming in from Shoreline, and at Shoreline I got 51 that are coming in. So it's like, okay, so if I clean up that boundary or shift it, it, it could end up just being the same, or it could actually make things worse for Centennial. So, and you see kind of a similar situation happening with Provo and, and Tempe. So I think some of the options that, just to kind of look at, is maybe just hold and put everything on hold until the DLI committee presents its recommendations. That way you don't end up with significant boundary adjustments that are happening multiple times, and just leave your secondary boundaries aligned with the feeder patterns, and then as students want to move between the Provo and Tempe feeder, they're already doing that through our permit process anyway. They, there are kids that are living in Spring Creek that are supposed to go to Tempe, that choice into Provo because of where they're living and it's closer, right? Some of the disadvantages is, on this hold, you're not increasing the utilization of our buildings, and it's not, it's not improving that situation for Franklin, Sunset View, and Spring Creek, but that's temporary. The other problem is Spring Creek is not part of a true feeder pattern. So you have part of Spring Creek that's getting pushed over to Provo High, and part of it that's getting pushed into Tempe, although I don't know that that's an immediate, you know, is, is this drastic? Does this need to be fixed right now? We could make some minor adjustments, so readjusting those boundaries in that area. And it could open, we haven't looked at this, and this might be a question that we could get more solid numbers on, but we could open some of those students to greater access to busing if they're assigned to a particular school, because right now you have some of those kiddos that are going to Franklin, and because they're choicing into Franklin, they can't bus to Franklin, but it could become, say, a hazardous route area, and there's enough students that then if they're, if they're pushed into that boundary, then there would be a greater obligation to do that. We would need to do some more studies specifically. I don't want to speak out of turn and assume that that would happen. And it could create a more definitive feeder pattern in the sense that you could say Spring Creek is now going to be genuinely a Tempe, go into the Tempe feeder so it doesn't split, or however you wanted to do that, you, you could make that correction in place. Just some, and, and I already, and I already said that, if you try to connect, if you try to correct the lower enrollment at Shoreline, you're going to increase the population at Provo High, and I think it gets really tricky to try to clean up the secondary feeder, because Shoreline is below capacity, but Provo High is above capacity. And so any adjustments you're making is going to make a correction here, and then, and then an unintended consequence elsewhere, unless you completely just blow it up. So.
Which seems so harpy that if Centennial really fills, it's just, it's just.
It does. But, but I also want to mention that you have the ability, without changing the boundaries, to just close Centennial to permits. So because Centennial is at that 90% capacity, if, if it hits that amount, you can just say, we're, Centennial's closed, and then those kids that are choicing into Centennial from out of the district can't go there, they would have the option to go to Shoreline. I, I do think Daryl makes a good point. He said this earlier, he goes, do you really want to prevent kids from inside our district moving between schools, but possibly maybe saying you can't be from outside of the district? But you, but we have another option to support Centennial, I guess is what I was saying there. So just with that, I think that's a discussion, whether you want to have that tonight, probably not, but maybe needs to come in line, because I just feel like we've kind of ended at this point, and it's like, we'll do something, and it's like, well, these are our choices. And, and so, yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, two other things, like, when I'm thinking about how and when we use this information to actually do something or realign boundaries, I feel like another piece of the conversation maybe should include what we're doing around CAS, because we started a discussion around our CAS programming and with the current model that we use, and if we're going to look at that, and maybe we're not going to look at that further, and we feel like we're, the way we make changes will be within the same format, I guess, you know what I'm saying? Where students go to school, then that's fine, but if, if that is a conversation that people want to have, it will also impact distribution of students potentially and schools' utilization. So that was just one that I had.
And to your point, what we decide to do with the Dixon site could also have an impact on that as well, right? And so.
Yeah, that's why it's all.
You know, so as you're deciding whether or not Dixon becomes.
The data's useful whether we're acting on it now or not, right?
Right. I just don't, I just don't want people to think that we're not acting on it. I want to say, sometimes we have the information to put a pin in it while we're waiting for other pieces of information to come online, and I don't want people to think that individuals are avoiding the hard conversations or avoiding the discussion. It's information that's going to inform maybe two or three later discussions that are coming, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I just, like, I totally agree with that, and that doesn't even mean we couldn't make some of those minor features thing. I just wanted to also introduce that. I would like to hear the DLI data before big decisions get made. I feel like that really does impact this conversation, but also just maybe a little more closure or a little more direction based on how you're thinking around our accelerated studies programs. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention from the Neighborhood District Meeting that I attended in the middle of July for District 1, there are 74 acres of land at 5078 North Canyon Road in North Tempe Neighborhood. And the process, right now it's proposed that they be annexed, and then after that, which, there was a real favorable supportive response to that annexation, then the next steps include rezoning and then concept and project plan, but the plans that were kind of introduced at that Neighborhood District Meeting, and people took kind of a survey vote on, anyway, ranged from 191 units of housing to 200, and I think it was, let me see, I got Rachel's notes, to two, 195 units to 219 units. And so as we're looking at specifically the Canyon Crest enrollment, we have to be mindful that there is a large enrollment of housing also coming that would be north of that school.
And I think Jared also brought up the point around Amelia, and, go ahead, let me.
Well, in Spring Creek, there's that construction that potentially out by Sunset View and Amelia.
Yeah. So there'll be some changes there too, which is why we put it into our policy to reevaluate this at least every five years as well, so.
Can I ask a question about the out of, out of district students?
Yeah.
The number in, if you go back a couple of slides.
Here's to me, I know how to do that.
One more, one more, right there. So the out of district enrollment is 448, that's almost a school. Are we subsidizing all those students because we don't get their property tax?
A little bit.
We also have to look though, how many of ours go?
Do we know that? How many of our students are going out of district?
It's fewer than that, but I don't have the exact total. We did get a bill from Alpine.
So they do charge us a bill, and we charge them a bill for these students that come in?
So we, they.
Well, we will now.
We have, we have sent them a bill in the past. We've decided to not mutually not send them right now, especially while the new districts are.
Considering our time here today, I think let's get a feel for Wendy's asking, do we kind of prefer Option 1, Option 2? And then depending on where we go from there, we, in an upcoming meeting, we can talk in more detail about some of these other questions that we have. So thoughts?
I think waiting for DLI information would be helpful. Yeah. Hopefully make the decision.
Okay?
That's what I think too.
Okay? Yes, yes. Gina?
Should just go with the consensus. I, I do want, I do think we should look at minor adjustments that may need to be made, but if that's too difficult, we don't have to. But I would like to look at some of the, some of the minor adjustments with some of the Franklans and the Creek, but not the bigger adjustments.
Those, those adjustments don't require DLI information. So I'm thinking if they're ready, we can combine those, like, do, if they wait for the DLI, that also.
Option 3, you can always do all of the above.
If we did something now, would that affect this school year, or are we waiting? This is.
No, it'll go into effect next school year.
So we have time.
We have time, yeah.
You have till December.
Yeah.
If you're going to make changes for next year.
Because we have to.
You have to do it before December. That's the law.
So I think all day meeting end of September, we'll have some more information on DLI. We can get at least a better idea of where we want to go with that, and whether it's worth making small adjustments or not.
Yeah. You only have to do it by December if you're closing a school. It's 90 days if it's a boundary adjustment, because we made the boundary adjustment before, and that was done in May.
Oh, yeah.
So as long as it's 90 days, you still have to have the hearings and stuff. It's when you close a school, you have to do it by December.
Yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't want to make a change in middle of the year.
No, no. No, no way.
Okay.
Okay?
So it sounds like generally we'll wait till we get some more DLI and CAS information.
We'll potentially make some minor changes.
And then we could make, and we have some time to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Are we have time on that committee?
Or is just gathering information?
I'm going to gather the information first, and then we want to create some proposals, and then we're going to start to go out to stakeholders on that.
Okay. Looking at the time and wanting to start our hearing on time, we are going to save the WASHATCH update and our consent calendar questions for our business meeting, and I just encourage you to look at our board calendar items. If you have any questions, contact me or Bonnie. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
When would we adjourn? Our, our study section?
The motion made by Board Member Van Magnen, we are adjourned, and we will start our public hearing in the PDC at 7:00.